Okay, Mayor.
Okay, welcome everyone to the Rossford City Council Meeting, February 28, 2022. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Watchell.
Roll call. Toth.
Here.
Oberdorff. Echol. Marquette.
Here.
Bruce.
Here.
Heben.
Here.
Reynolds.
Here.
Okay, is there a motion to excuse Mrs. Echol and Mr. Oberdorff?
So moved.
Second.
Kevin, don't we have to do them separately?
We do it separate.
That's what I heard it was.
Who's Echol?
Echol first, yeah, that's what he said, right?
Right.
That's why I was second.
Vote on the motion to excuse Mrs. Echol, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to excuse Mr. Oberdorff.
Like I said, second.
My God, your rules. They're my rules, come on, guys.
All those in favor of excusing Mr. Oberdorff, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the February 14, 2022, regular council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the minutes of February 14, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain, I wasn't here.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda for the February 28, 2022, regular council meeting?
Move to amend the agenda to add an executive session to discuss personnel at 4A, add Public Works Committee report, and add ordinance 2022-10.
Second.
All those in favor of accepting the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, committee reports.
Move to go into executive session to discuss personnel.
Okay.
Second, sorry.
Vote on the motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel. Heben.
Aye.
Bruce.
Aye.
Marquette.
Aye.
Toth.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
All right, committee reports. Go ahead, Mr. Toth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Works Committee meeting was at the zoning building. This meeting took place on February 10, 2022, at 4:00 PM. In attendance were Ms. Zukowski-Echol, Ms. Reynolds, Ms. Murray, Mr. Kolb, Mr. Toth, and Mr. Audet. Mr. Audet led the meeting by discussing various ongoing and recommended projects. Bridge inspection reports have since been received but weren't at the time of the meeting. Tetra Tech is working on a paving program as well as assisting in asset management and a maintenance plan. Also discussed was the recommendation of the repaving and restriping of the parking lots at both 133 Osborne and the Rec Center. Mr. Audet also spoke of possible renovations at 133 Osborne, the repairs at the Rec, and the replacement of the salt barn at Wales Road. Mr. Audet discussed with the committee about the zoning map update with the next revision coming in May. Also discussed were the crossroads traffic impact study, the situations at Eagle Point and Indian Hills, and which properties have or haven't submitted site plans. The committee also heard about the US-20 mobility study and the citywide watershed improvement study. Just before the meeting adjourned, Bob Toth was named Chair of the Public Works Committee. The meeting was then adjourned.
All right, any comments or questions? Okay. Report of the mayor and administrator, Allison, do you have anything this evening?
Just very quickly, we've gotten several comments and calls, so I wanted to acknowledge the excellent job that Tyler Kolb and the Public Works Department has done on keeping the snow and the ice off the streets this year. We've gotten several calls, so it's not very often that we get calls about good things, so I wanted to share that. Thank you, Tyler, and your crew. And then also, there was an ordinance at everyone's desk earlier. This will be 2022-10, and this will actually amend a contract that we did with Tetra Tech last summer from an ordinance 2021-28 that will add Windsor Drive to our paving program for the next five years.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions? Tyler, great job, and let the guys know, it's very much appreciated. I just have one thing tonight, this isn't a secret, everybody's aware, but Zoe Huesar accomplished something that I don't know if anybody in the country's ever accomplished. Friday night, she is named Rossford Homecoming Queen at the basketball game. And Sunday afternoon, she won the state championship in her weight class for wrestling. So I think that's awesome, and congratulations, Zoe. Correspondents, Mr. Watchell.
I have one piece of correspondence, Mayor. It's a memorandum to Officer Brandon Dean from Chief Kitzler dated February 24. Officer Dean, I received word that on February 23, 2022, you responded to a report of a possible suicidal subject at a local hotel. Upon arrival, you made contact with the front desk and were able to locate a room number for the subject as well as a master key. Upon your arrival at the room, you knocked and announced heard someone in the room. After getting no response, you made entry into the room and announced again. After doing a quick sweep of the room, you observed a female that was turning purple with a bed sheet wrapped around her neck in the closet. You were able to hold the female up and untie the bed sheet from the shelf in the closet. You also secured the scene until EMS arrived to transport the female to the hospital. In your supervisor's opinion, your selfless service and quick actions directly resulted in the saving of the subject's life. Your actions emulate our mission and core values, and I commend you for your dedication and hard work. Sincerely, Todd Kitzler, Chief of Police.
Chief, let Brandon know how much we appreciate the job he does on a daily basis. Okay, introduction of ordinances. Is there a motion to read ordinance 2022-06 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2022-06 is an ordinance authorizing the award of a contract for the Crossroads Roundabout roadway improvement project and declaring an emergency. This is a first reading.
Allison, do we want this passed this evening?
If we can pass it, yes.
Okay.
Move to suspend with the second and third reading of ordinance 2022-06.
Mr. Marquette, I'm sorry.
We have a visual that we can put on the screen for people to see.
There it is.
There you go. This would be the Parkway coming down where Sportsman Drive comes across, and it will allow access in to the different parcels.
This is for the Kenworth Project. If you look to the left or to the west, that's where Kenworth is going in. And then the BP gas station is down the bottom. So 795 is not in the picture, BP there. Right now, I think there's a, this is a flashing light there, right? Now, which is going to be taken down, obviously. This allows, the way Mr. Audet set it up, this allows trucks to come out of the Kenworth Project and go left and right. The way it would set up now, they couldn't make a left-hand turn because of safety issues. So that was a roundabout design that he had.
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Does anyone in the audience have any questions or any issues with us passing this this evening? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to declare ordinance 2022-06 an emergency.
Second.
All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to adopt ordinance 2022-06.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt. Bruce.
Aye.
Heben.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Toth.
Aye.
Marquette.
Aye.
Sorry, did we go out to the audience?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Is there a motion to read ordinance 2022-07 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2022-07 is an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to sign a contract with Huntington National Bank for services as awarded from the response to the banking services request for qualifications issued by the city and declaring an emergency. This is a first reading.
Mr. Bruce.
I apologize, we got finance committee meeting minutes in for tonight's meeting, but we did discuss this item and made a recommendation for approval. We did receive responses back from two banks, Huntington and Fifth Third, so.
You're on a roll. Want to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to suspend the second and third reading for ordinance 2022-07.
Second.
Is there anyone in the audience that has an issue or any questions in regard to us passing this this evening? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to declare ordinance 2022-07 an emergency. Second.
All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move for adoption of ordinance 2022-07. Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt. Bruce.
Aye.
Heben.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Toth.
Aye.
Marquette.
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance 2022-08 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2022-08 is an ordinance authorizing the administration to take the necessary steps to purchase a certain parcel of real estate and declaring an emergency. This is a first reading.
Allison, is this, is this the one that they sold?
No, this is this one.
Oh, okay.
This is the back section of Beach Street. It's adjacent to property that the city already owns, and we could utilize it in the future for parking or to tie the pickleball courts together.
Mr. Marquette?
I have a question. We talked about this before, but I drove by there yesterday, I was looking at it from down Belory. There's quite a difference in those two ridges, isn't there?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, that bridge going to become kind of a difficult thing to get done? I mean, we're talking about connecting those two properties still, correct?
Yeah, we're going to have to go, we could make this a parking lot, we could utilize it as a kiddie lot, we could put in play structures, there's a lot of things we could do other than a parking lot. But then eventually, we would like to utilize rails to trails or a Clean Ohio Trail grant package in order to get from the pickleball court at Beach Street to the pickleball courts that are owned by the post office. They're the Toledo Pickleball Courts.
I love the idea.
I think it would create a lot of opportunity for us for pickleball.
I'd like to see us do this this evening.
Good.
Yeah.
Move to, which one was that, 2008?
08.
08.
Move to suspend the second, third readings of 2022-08.
Second.
Does anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this or any questions in regards to? Just come up to the mic.
Just something that's kind of interesting. Is it possible that you could do the lot to the south?
Want me to put it on the map, you said?
For some reason, I don't know why it happened this way, but when that land at the post office was treated to the school for Wallen Street property, the city kept the parcel on the other side of the creek, an unusual side type of parcel.
I'm not sure which parcel, the one we're looking at now or the one next to the post office?
Go south a little bit, yeah.
Okay.
See where the green field is, right where the arrow is now.
To the practice of this?
Go up and to the east. All that belongs to the city of Rossford. And it is kind of, it was never, the creek is in there, but it was never transferred to the school when there was the trade for the Wallen Street School. That's how the city landed up, yeah, right there. That's belong, that belongs to the city of Rossford. And I don't, I'm not making any value statements there. I think a lot of people, when you look at these maps sometimes, find out, you know, wait a second, is there other potential use in there at all? You do have a creek right along that northern line, but the rest of that is city property. That's the one. Just, it has nothing to do with actually the ordinance that you have before you, except I remember looking at that not too long ago, I was wondering if, you know, is there something they could do in that area? And why it was never really transferred to the school, maybe, but it just kind of sits there. Doesn't cost you anything. I don't see, I think the school probably cuts part of the grass that's there, but it's just there.
Okay, anyone else?
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not used to doing these. That's why you guys should do these instead of me. Where we at, move adoption?
Emergency.
Emergency.
Second.
All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption?
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance 2022-08. Marquette?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance 2022-09 by title only?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2022-09 is an ordinance authorizing the administration to take the necessary steps to purchase a certain parcel of real estate and declaring an emergency. This is a first reading.
Allison.
This is the one that already has an offer on, but the city would like to be prepared in case something were to fall through with that. So we would want that in order to either expand the turn lane or whatever we might do at the corner of Superior and Glenwood in order to address the issue with the light.
Has everybody had a chance to look at this?
Move to suspend second and third reading. Second.
Does anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening or any questions in regards to it?
No.
Erin Crawford, 544 Bruins. Where is this?
That's Glenwood to the left.
Mm-hmm.
And Superior.
Dr. Woods is the hall.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
The city does own, that's where the house was, to the west, where we bought that property, tore down the house.
Okay, anyone else?
Nope.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to declare an emergency.
Second.
All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt 2022-09. Heben?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Marquette?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance 2022-10 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
2022-10 is an ordinance authorizing approving change order number one and amending the contract with Tetra Tech on the annual paving and roadway design project and declaring an emergency. This is a first reading.
This is the change order to add Windsor Drive to the 2023 Jennings Road Project. Go ahead, Kevin. I mean, Chris.
If we don't have five.
Yeah, we don't have five, so it just.
Gotcha. Okay, first reading. Introduction of resolutions. Is there a motion to read Resolution 2022-05 by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2022-05 is a resolution to approve a mutual aid police protection contract with various Northwest Ohio political subdivisions and declare an emergency. First reading.
Go ahead, Chris.
Chief Kitzler, this is just a re-up of our mutual aid agreement, correct?
Yeah, the last one that we were under hasn't been resigned by new administrators and stuff since 2012, so there's.
Move to suspend the second and third reading. Second.
Anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to declare an emergency. Second.
All those in favor of declaring an emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to adopt. Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt Resolution 2022-05. Heben?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Marquette?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
All right, council remarks. Councilman Tell, do you have anything this evening?
I just want to congratulate Brenna, Reynolds, and Zach Schmidt for their engagement. And Tyler, you guys did a good job again. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Marquette?
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. Bruce?
Just a quick question for a good law director. The state is now allowing remote meetings, or at least through the summer, June, July. Can we, do we need an ordinance on that, or can we just?
Council sets their own rules.
Okay, I'd like to, I mean, I don't know where Caroline and Larry are tonight, but maybe they could have joined in if we would have. And I know I'm going to be out at the next meeting, if I can get away, I could then join into the meeting, so.
I don't mind doing that this evening.
I'd like to make that motion.
The only thing I would say, our IT guy is, will he be able to accommodate that?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a good, good idea.
And so then you'll have to send the link out to us, okay.
I'll second.
I think the motion would be to allow virtual participation by council individuals.
Can't be able to vote.
Is there anyone in the audience that has a problem with us passing this this evening or any questions in regards to it?
Is that, is that just, is that committee meetings also, or is that just?
Yes.
Vote on the motion to allow virtual participation in council meetings.
Is it council and committee meeting?
Council and committee meetings.
Sorry.
It's all right. Bruce?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Marquette?
Aye.
That's all.
Okay. Mr. Heben?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mrs. Reynolds?
I just wanted to say congratulations to Chief Kitzler on his graduation from the Certified Law Enforcement Executive Program. It was an extensive 14-month program, and I just wanted to say how much we appreciate all you do, and congratulations.
Great job. All right, audience remarks. Anybody in the audience, come up to the microphone, please, and state your name and address for the record.
Jenny Hill, 109 Homestead Drive. I wish I'd have been here last week because I didn't know the, or last meeting, I didn't know the agenda for that meeting, and I missed it by about an hour because I showed up at 7:00. But this regards the marina, and I'm not sure who I need to address it to because when I looked on the website, it still said Marquette, Dunzig, and Stasik as marina council.
I got rid of them, I'm by myself.
I'd like to know exactly where the thought came from as far as trying to be in line with other marinas and which marinas you were choosing to emulate when you decided to raise rates.
It's not so much about trying to keep them in line, it's just trying to cover our cost.
Well, it's a substantial increase to the boaters.
And it's not cheap to run a marina.
I understand that, too, but part of that is we're the furthest private marina from the lake, so we have the highest gas costs to get to the lake. And part of the reason you are full and part of the reason we're there is because the costs are lower, but we sacrifice amenities for that.
Sure.
So now you're raising rates, and we still have portageons, and maybe a pump-out that works, and maybe water on Northwall.
Those are being addressed. We have, we're awarding a grant to do a facility down at the marina, which would be indoor plumbing and 21st century style.
So the bathrooms that, I think I'd heard bathrooms or something would be coming. Is that going to be strictly for the boaters only?
No.
No.
So that's really not an amenity for us at all. We just get.
We're not a yacht club. We're a municipal marina.
Well, there's a lot of.
Most of our boaters probably use the river as opposed to going out to the lake.
Not this one.
I'm just speaking, you know, majority.
But there's a lot of public marinas that have stores, gas, pump-out available besides the parking, and, you know, they have restaurants or other stuff available, bathrooms with showers.
They're not owned by a municipality.
They are not owned by a municipality. And some of them run cheaper than what the rates are going to be now, and some of them don't. But again, all the different amenities kind of play into that and location. With that, and the other thing I wanted to ask, it said that you were increasing it 12.5% this year and 12.5% next year. But I'm kind of confused because when I take last year's dock rent and I apply 12.5%, I don't get the numbers you got. The percentages range from 13% increase for a certain dock to 17% for.
I don't think that was straight across the board, some of those numbers were rounded up.
We went to the next closest, like, we weren't going to have like 32, you know, $632. We went to if it was.
Well, then it's not a 12.5% increase this year and next. It's like a 15% increase this year and a 15% increase next year, though.
Yeah. Like I said, it's not cheap to run a marina. And we, the city's been covering the marina for as long as I've been on the marina committee, and that's been over 25 years. And it's time for us to stand up and hold our own.
Why were, why were launch fees not raised maybe five bucks to 15?
I'm not sure what, why they weren't raised, to be honest with you. Would it make you happy if we raised them?
I don't know if it'd make me happy if they raised, I mean, I don't want anybody to have to pay necessarily more, but I get the cost, everything's going up, the cost of everything's going up for us.
Yeah, it's going up.
But it's, it's a little bit harder to swallow the jump that we're making when we don't, I mean, the only reason we're here is because we live in Rossford. My husband's a firefighter, and there have been times we've been sitting on the boat, and he's left the boat to take calls, and we still have a teenage daughter at home. So we don't really want to be anywhere else. But it's getting to the point where we're going to start looking at Harbor View and some of the other ones a little further out because we're not going to be able to afford to stay a mile from our house.
We're not doing it because we want to, again, we're just trying to cover our own costs. And, you know, we got personnel that we paid a lot less last year when we put the boats, the docks in. We've got upgraded docks, we're going to have an upgraded facility for showers and restrooms.
for showers and restrooms, concession stand, that will all be amenable to marina committee or marina members, so.
Well.
We're, we're trying to fix it up, I think Jerry and Bob took big steps that way, and Grant, what we got because of their hard work, is going to benefit the marina, so it'll get better, but prices aren't going to go down anywhere around here, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Anyone else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?